Evening, I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have all members present and I do declare a quorum. This evening, we have with us Elena Stover, who is a 4th grade student at Pleasant Valley Elementary School, and Elena is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Elena, thank you for being here this evening. Do you have with you some folks that you would like to introduce to us?
Yes, I have my dad, Jason Lee Stover, my mom, Amanda Moore Stover, and my sister, Dawn.
Welcome, Stover family. And do you have someone else there with you?
Um, Mrs. Mayonado, my principal.
Welcome, Mrs. Mayonado. So Amanda, you're in the 4th grade, I understand?
Yes.
What's a 4th grade day like at Pleasant Valley?
Well, mine's not normal.
I'm sorry?
Well, mine's not normal.
Yours isn't normal?
No, it's because I used to have leukemia.
Oh, okay, so you'll have a very different day.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, could, would you want to share with us how different your day is, what might be different about it?
Well, usually, some people pull me out of class so they can get me caught up.
I see, I see. And your studies at Pleasant Valley? Do you enjoy your studies there?
Yeah, one time I studied about lionfish.
About what? A lionfish? Oh, is there something special about that that caught your attention?
Yeah, did you know their spikes can poison their prey?
In a lionfish?
Yep.
I had no idea. Thank you, you've taught me something this evening. Are you a reader, Amanda? Elena, I'm sorry, are you a reader, Elena?
Yes.
You are? What kinds of things do you like to read?
I like to read nonfiction and fiction books. My favorite nonfiction book is probably Bones and my fiction book is probably about Jaguars.
Ah, good choices, good choices. Colleagues, do you have any questions that you would like to ask Elena? Mr. Stauffer?
Did I hear you correctly say you used to have leukemia?
Yes, I used to have leukemia.
So, you're in remission now?
Pretty much, yeah.
Wonderful, I think that deserves a round of applause. Congratulations, what are, so you said some of, some of the other students and your teachers and principal would help support you through that? What are some other things that they did?
They gave me lots of gifts.
Ah, that's nice.
My whole closet is filled with them.
Wrapped or unwrapped?
I'm somewhere still wrapped.
Are they? Good smart girl, save those. Anyone else, colleagues? Well, we certainly appreciate you being here and bringing your family and your little sister along with you to lead us in the pledge in the moment of silence this evening. So, good luck to you at Pleasant Valley, I hope the rest of the year, and you don't have many days left, are you counting down the days?
Not really.
That's good, that's good. All right, well, if I don't see you again, you have a happy summer, okay?
Thank you.
All righty, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll have approval of the agenda.
Move for approval.
Thank you, thank you. Discussion?
I would like to amend the agenda. I'd like to remove items 1, 2, and 5 as a separate vote.
From the consent agenda you're speaking of?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so under new business, item 2, you're wishing to remove items 1, 2, and 5 from a separate, for a separate vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Gessford's amendment?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any discussion on the amendment?
Can I have a clarification? We're not dropping those items.
No.
You just mean, you want to vote separately?
Separately, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, any further discussion? So, the amendment to the agenda, under new business, item 2, is to separate from the consent agenda, items 1, 2, and 5 for a separate vote?
Yes.
All those in favor of the amendment to the agenda? All right, it's unanimous and the student member concurs. Motion now is on the approval of the agenda with the amendment, all those in favor? Okay, thank you, it's unanimous, student member concurs. Our next item of business is the approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I move for approval of closed session minutes dated Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous, motion carries.
Madam President, approve for, uh, move for approval of business, business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous with the student member concurring. Okay, that brings us to public comment. Before we begin our public comment section of our meeting this evening, I would like to read from Board Policy KD. At each public business meeting of the Board of Education, an opportunity will be provided for individuals to speak to matters relating to Washington County Public Schools. This opportunity, under the agenda title of public comment, will follow the approval of the minutes. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. Mr. Bickford will be our timekeeper this evening to make sure that no one goes over the allotted five minutes. And the first person I have on the list of those who have signed up in advance is Mr. Levi Little. So, Mr. Little, if you'd like to come forward.
May I defer the first person to be as Mayor Savano and then I, Paul?
I am fine with that. Do we have anyone who objects to that? Mayor Savano, you are our second person on the list, so welcome you to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, this means you have 30 seconds left, so, and then I hold up the red stop.
Thank you all, and I will recognize the Board's policy as regards to individuals, but I just wanted, you should be aware that your, that some of the actions of the, of the Board has kind of thrown me off, a little bit off script today because of some, some of the issues that we're aware of with regards to changes in the faculty at Hancock High School. This does create some issues for, for me personally, is that, as you may be aware, that on this Thursday, I had invited the Secretary of Agriculture to come to Hancock specifically to look at our ag science program, and changes in personnel there will make that a little bit of a difficult decision. But I think, you know, I initially thought about possibly canceling that visit, but on second thought, I think it's really, that visit is really about the students and it's about affording them the opportunity to be congratulated for the work that they've done and hopefully they'll continue to do in the future. I guess what I would say to the Board is, you know, our, the town of Hancock has gone through a lot of changes in identity. You know, we lost a lot of manufacturing jobs, we've kind of created our new identity, biking, walking, running, hunting, fishing. This is what attracts people to our town. We've had economic hardships and other hardships, but we do take pride in our community and we take a lot of pride in our school. The town has worked to make commitments to our high school program. We clearly understand that one of the keys to academic success is engagement, and we know that the ag program at Hancock High School has certainly accomplished that. Hancock as a location provides a unique opportunity for agriculture education, for STEM-based education, due to its nearby location and natural resources. As you know, the town's trying to work with the, with the Board and with, to lease land so a cattle-raising program could be instituted. At the time of the last council meeting, I brought College Vocational Education Promise Program to the town looking to create more opportunities for graduates of Hancock High School. The thing that I'd want to point out is that there's really three things that have a great economic impact on a town. The first is a loss of business, and we certainly have experienced that. The second, which I think our friends in Berkeley Springs are going to find out real soon, is a road that bypasses your town is going to have a big impact on your economic viability. But the third and the most important thing is the loss of a community school, and that's really my concern. You know, whether it's by choice or by necessity, many students find Hancock to be the ideal site of learning. Some are there because they are caring for younger siblings or have jobs in the area, some are working with family businesses, and they certainly appreciate the opportunity to get a quality education in their own community. Now, we recognize that sometimes there is a disparity in educational spending, that's just kind of the way it is. But, but I'm going to tell you that the social impact of a community school can't be overstated, and I would ask the Board that you look at the entire county budget spread over the entire county to make sure that whether students go to a magnet school or choose to be schooled in, in their own community, that they have that opportunity. I think that's really part of what your mission is, that you, that to the best of your ability, the best of, whether it's economic or financial, whatever it might be, that all students, no matter where they live, have equal opportunity. We are very concerned about the future of a, of a program that has been started in our school, has been nurtured, and it's not just what's done during school, it's what's done after school. It's the FFA program that we certainly feel is now at risk. We're, we're, we, we're not defeated, and we certainly will rise above this, but I do think honestly that this is, this, that some of the decisions that are being made in regards to Hancock High School are short-sighted, and I certainly know that they're going to harm our community. And as mayor of the town, I'm here to ask that you reconsider some of the actions that have been taken, and that, at the very least, that you ensure that the same opportunities that exist now are presented to the students in Hancock High School in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Savano. Mr. Little?
I would like to start off by saying thank you for what you all do. You know, I want to recognize that the reason why you do this is for the love of educating our children and making sure that they have a better and brighter future. I understand the difficulty of some of the decisions that you need to make, but if it were easy, then we probably wouldn't need so many leaders to guide the way. Just like the love that you have for education, the people of Hancock have the same love for our community and our school. Three hours ago, I just received bad news in regard to our ag program, but I'm not going to stay here and discuss that due to policy. But I'm shocked, to say the least. But I would like to discuss the future of Hancock schools. We've been neglected, overlooked, and stolen from. You can sit there and say that Hancock schools cost more per capita than any of our other schools, but how is that possible when all the other schools have had millions of dollars dropped into them for repairs, upgrades, and completely new schools put in? The dollar figure per pupil may be a single line item in a budget, but the overall cost of our school has been minimal over the decades because of the fractions that we've received compared to other Washington County schools. Now, you can pretty much cue up the music and say, "Well, that's a different budget." But reality is Hancock schools have not received the same amount of funding that other schools throughout the county have received. Our elementary school infrastructure is decaying, and you all know it. I would like to propose an idea of combining our elementary school and our middle school together and place a new facility where our elementary school stands now, and turn our high school into a technical high school, and start bringing students back to Hancock. I'm asking you to start looking at examples like Poolsville, Maryland. Poolsville also had the same problem with a decline in enrollment. They also have very large cities throughout that county, but their Board of Education had seen that the, that, they saw that they could utilize the space in Poolsville for a magnet program. They had placed a global ecology magnet program there, and it was very successful, so successful that they placed two more magnet programs in Poolsville School. But, so even though there was a distance for children and parents to travel, sometimes that distance is overweight by education, and people will go the extra mile. That's what I'm asking you to do. Please consider going the extra mile for Hancock and help us build for the future. Think about how we can increase our student population instead of trying to cut us down. There are lots of options, and you have a town that's willing and wanting to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
I'm going to let her talk because she's got the real story.
Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Anastasia Broaddus. I am the Executive Director of the Robert W. Johnson Community Center, and I am here today to talk to you all about peace circles and restorative justice being incorporated within Washington County Public Schools. I have the awesome privilege of serving the same students that attend Washington County Public Schools after school between the hours of 2:30 and 7 o'clock, where they are provided with a snack by the school system, and they are there, we do activities, we do their homework, and all that great stuff. Two days a week, what we do is we do peace circles. I was fortunate enough to go to a training in DC where it was a four-day magnificent training for restorative justice specializing in peace circles. And so, on, twice a week, on Mondays and on Fridays, as a center, the kids and I, we come together and we hold a peace circle. There are a number of different, different topics that we cover. Right now, what seems to be is there is a huge issue with bullying, and so if that is what is going on within the center and with our kids, I ask them every single day, "How are you? How are you feeling?" And just the amazing responses of them coming home from school to the center, it, some of them, they're not doing good. They're not doing good whether they're falling behind in their schoolwork at school, or they're not understanding what's going on. So, checking in with them, seeing how they are, and then on Mondays and Fridays, the amount of students who are able to open up and say what is going on is, it's magnificent. I'm then able to contact some of their teachers and say, "Hey, I have a student who is struggling. Is there any extra resources that you are able to give me?" Had I not been able to do the training that I was able to do and have those peace circles twice a week, I would have no idea necessarily what's really going on with our students in Washington County Public Schools. I also get the privilege of going to Northern Middle School for two teachers and holding peace circles within their class, and just to know that the teacher, the same thing, they would not have known what is actually going on with their students had this opportunity not been afforded. So, the solution for my center is restorative justice peace circles. It's finding out what is going on, and it's one of these things where people are, "Oh, well, then there's no time for instruction." You can certainly do your instruction in a circle. It gives everyone face-to-face contact, they get to look at each other, you, it's, it's, they can do it in a circle, all of their instruction, they can, so that there's times when they have to speak about something, they have the right to do so. So, in, in my center, as far as last year, as of right now, I had 15 suspensions last year, this time now, I only had three. So, since I've been doing it, since I came back from training, it's been working.
Following up on the wonderful Community of Hope, Bester Community of Hope event that we had recently, which brought together many stakeholders and ideas on what we can do to strengthen and build learning and safer communities, I'd like to share some comments from a teacher at Bester, Katie Henlein. She is wise, she knows that there will always be another meeting, but tonight's the only time she has that moment with her son, so she's asked me to read a description of what happens in her classroom. Building relationships helps to build the foundation of a classroom. Students build relationships by communicating each morning in a structured circle known as a peace circle, which is also a well-known restorative practice. There they have an opportunity to greet one another and offer a compliment for the day. After greetings, the students are posed to question, where it may be based on a problem from the classroom, or it might be about self-awareness. Student voice is encouraged during this time, but it's not mandatory. When a student shares and others listen, it builds relationships with peers. By sharing the story, students grow to understand that they are not alone. This builds empathy and ultimately, community. Throughout the day, students meet back in the circle to collaborate and share ideas about curriculum-based instruction, being face-to-face with each other and acknowledging what they can share helps them agree and disagree easily. This once again builds relationships and encourages students to be leaders. Creating this norm minimizes stress while teaching students that it's okay to have a voice. So, now she's asking us to consider a time that we felt frustrated or a time when we were having a bad day. As adults, we hope we know who to turn to or what to do under most circumstances, but nowadays, students are struggling. They're struggling to speak to adults or others who are not listening, they're struggling to find the right words, they're struggling to respect others and themselves, they're struggling to have a voice. As adults, we should ask, "At what time during the school day are we teaching students to be themselves and allow them to share their experiences and needs to become citizens?" Circles help us develop the whole student in addition to a test score. How we doing on time, boss? Minute or so? Thank you. So, two years or so ago, two years or so ago, I sat here and publicly committed to do what I could to make an improvement here at the county about a year ago, and I'm going to take, I'm going to take claim for big crowds, because the last time I came talking about restorative practices, it was a full room, so obviously, I'm the draw. And so, I'm here now because this is an example of the community that's asking us to implement, and circles are the big viewpoint of restorative practices, it's what you see, there's a whole spectrum of things that are part of it. But the community's saying, "We're using this. It's helping our students, our people who are your students, it's helping the families." I had one person say they took it home and sat down and said, "Mom, we need a circle," and they solved things at home. We're seeing it in classrooms. Both Katie and the Community Center came to restorative practices not through my skullduggery or proselytism, it's coming into the community. I've been told that there's some feel we don't have adequate buy-in to commit the resources to implement restorative practices. That's, that's here perhaps in this room, but not out in the classrooms. There is buy-in. And so, what I'm asking is that as a Board, as employees, as community members, can we talk, can we take a look at how we can manage the resources that we have? Minimal cost and investment, and implement among the willing, so that we're working with, not another top-down, "This is what we're going to do to you" program. To implement restorative practices in a considered and trained way. At Inteadham Academy, we tried doing it on our own for two years, half the program, we won 100% of the results, got nothing. And so, I'm concerned that people are going to see this and try to do it on their own without adequate resources. So, we're saying if we can create a community of the willing and support them as we implement it, in two years' time, we will have the data, we can compare it demographically to those classrooms and schools that do not have it, and we can tell if it's a fit for us. I appreciate your time and your consideration. I've got a packet of propaganda, and there's a little disk drive because I was too ambitious and I got the file too big to email to you. So, we thank you for your time and for all you do on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you all. Here to speak on the ag program from Hancock, it is a little discouraging whenever you get emails and news and you start to look into it, and it seems like you get one story after another story, and nothing comes together. But I'm here to tell you, Hancock community is probably, you, you will not find people that invest in their community like Hancock. When the ag program first came part of Hancock, I was so excited that I reached out to our ag teacher, said, "What can I do? There are certain things that he needed, so I went to work trying to get things donated so that our ag program could have things." But further than that, our kids are the most important thing to us, so whatever we can do as a community to make sure our kids have, that's what we do. Whether, you know, we have to go out and fundraise ourselves and donate money to the ag, that's what we'll do. At the same time, though, I don't understand how come every time Hancock gets something that seems like it's successful, it gets jerked away from us every single time. And it seems like every time that you ask a question, it's another story. I'm asking you all to reconsider some of the decisions you all made with our ag program, and I understand that every school has its, its turns, but if another program at another school doesn't work, then find a way for that program to work, don't strip it from Hancock and take it somewhere else to make that one work, because ultimately, our kids, I can tell you right now, that ag program has changed a lot of kids' life in Hancock. They respect the teacher, they respect the program, and when you're looking at over 55% of your students is involved in that program, and you have kids that talk about it every day, that's pretty important. So, I'm asking you all to please look at the decisions when it comes down to Hancock and make sure that our ag program is the successful program that it is now. make sure that our ag program is the successful program that it is now, and we will get over, you know, and we'll overcome things when it comes along, but just don't take it from us and not give us a good reason why. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott Bryan?
Yeah, I uh, I'm speaking.
All right, thank you. All right, that is the end of our list of individuals who have signed up in advance. Is there anyone who has not had the opportunity would like to come forward?
I did sign up. Marsha Flowers.
I'm sorry, I don't see your name on here, Mrs. Flowers, but you, you may approach, please. We just need to have your full name and your address so that we have that for the record.
I signed up yesterday. I'm just going to.
I apologize.
You. Marsha Flowers. And what else? My address?
Uh huh.
Four zero zero six Restly Road in Hancock.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm Marsha Flowers. First, I'm a mom. I have two kids that graduated successfully from Hancock High School. Both graduated with completer programs that helped them make choices in college, as well as teachers that really knew them and helped steer them in the right direction. One graduated from Towson and has successfully gained employment in an accounting job, and the other one is currently finishing up successfully at Garrett College in the Wildlife Technology Program and plans on finishing two more years with the same program at Frostburg. All along, I've always looked at what was best for my kids and their future. I made every effort to look at their future along with the budget we had as a two-teacher household. Being at Hancock and all it offered, as well as the teachers that knew them personally, made a difference in who they are and what they are becoming. Secondly, I'm a teacher in Washington County. I've taught twenty-six years between the two elementary schools I have been employed. I currently am teaching fifth grade at Hancock Elementary. I have many parents each year asking for my opinion and advice on what to do when they think about available programs for their fifth graders becoming middle schoolers. I try to help them look at the bigger picture and what is best for their child and offer advice through their future. Thirdly, I live in Hancock. I grew up in Hagerstown but have lived in Hancock for almost twenty-seven years. I care about the kids in Hancock, the jobs available here, the living situations, the opportunities that we have, and the future of Hancock. So why am I speaking up tonight? I'm speaking up because I care about what is best for kids in Hancock. My own kids, my current students, my past students, and my future students. I've heard a lot of rumblings the last few months about changes that will have an impact on all the above mentioned. Losing positions, reassigning positions, cutting back positions, and even closing our high school. I'm gonna cut to the chase, like that kind of a person. Tell me what's up and why. I need time to process and see if there are other options, rather than not to have a voice when something impacts me. Let's be real and let's be honest. I don't like worrying about things that may or may not happen. That's why I usually go to the horse's mouth to get the truth rather than listen to rumors. So I did email Dr. Michael, which I truly respect as an approachable person. I appreciate that. It's a big difference. Why has our ag program been stripped of the teacher that has already worked well and successfully here? Clear Springs position was just posted within the past week, and now Hancock's position was posted today. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to realize what happened. I've walked here long enough to know what positions have to be posted, and although the position has already been determined, sixty percent of our juniors are in the ag program as a completer, along with other completer programs. It's been a huge boost, especially to our girls in the program. Are all the things brought here through the grants and our programs also going to be moved to another school, that whoever takes this new position will have to start from scratch? I think that would be wrong. Is the success of the ag program more important in one school than in another? The only reason I can see that it is more important is to go ahead and all, with already-made plans to prepare for the closure of Hancock High School. Again, let's be honest and let the stakeholders know in advance of what is on the table and being strongly considered, if not already a done deal. I've seen this happen to other schools, especially my sister's community in Southern West Virginia. It's already happened. It's happened to others in this crowd and from other communities that may or may not be speaking to address it today or in the future. Are we losing our assistant principal position? We have lost it before. Then we replaced it with interns. Now we have it again, but losing it as a full-time position. We just discussed this at the Teacher Tuesday session. There's not enough staff to deal with the bullying and the mental health issues and behavior issues in our schools. There's not enough counselors or admin to deal with it in the smaller schools. Are we considering closing our high school and combining it with Clear Spring? I want an honest answer to what's being considered. You may not have all the logistics figured out, but I'm pretty sure all these other things happening are just smaller steps leading up to a much bigger agenda. I just wish we were respected to get an honest answer, to be a part of the solution for what is best for kids in Hancock. Are we making Hancock a K to eight school and closing the elementary school? Is this thought being considered? If so, again, it would be nice to know what things are on the table for consideration. What is best for our students? What is best for all students in Washington County? We should all be equal, but we clearly are not. Most people don't even realize that Hancock is actually a part of Washington County. The amount of programs, courses, and completers at all other schools, elementary, middle, or high schools, goes well beyond what's offered here. Is it best for the kids in Hancock to pick up the whole ag program along with other teachers and send it to another school? Is it best to ask the current and prospective students for these programs, programs in Hancock to be bused to Clear Spring? Is it okay for kids in Hancock to spend over an hour on the bus to and from school? Is it best for our enrollment in Hancock to decline it even further by forcing kids and parents to choose another school replacement? Is it best for our kids in Hancock to have so many administrators over the past ten years that I've been up here that there's no one to fight for what we need? Is it fair for kids in Hancock? Let me ask if it's okay for all these things to happen at any of the other high schools in our county. Let's look at the big picture of what's best. Tell me what is being considered to help the students of Hancock? What is best for our students? If a county commissioner or Board of Ed employee lived up this way with kids in the school, it would get more attention. I'm just being honest because I care. Bigger doesn't always mean better when thinking about what is best for kids. I realize money doesn't grow on trees and things have to be cut when looking at a budget, but it seems there's always an easy target. Did I finish this last sentence there? Thank you. It's the last page, sorry. I tried to talk fast. In March, I went to Annapolis to uh march for the Fix the Fund Initiative, and they listened. That was not just for all of Maryland, not just for our county, but for our school in Hancock as well. All students matter. I just wish others in our county thought so as well. Thank you for listening to my point of view as a mom, a teacher, a community member that cares about what is best for kids. I really hope you will consider working with us as part of the team of Washington County School System. Please don't close our school.
Mrs. Flowers, I, I owe you an apology. You did, in fact, sign up in advance, and I had an email to that effect. I mistakenly thought that all names were reflected on this list this evening, so I do apologize. The error, the error was mine, not the secretary's, okay?
He gave me an extra minute and a half as payment. Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has not had the opportunity or who I might have overlooked having received an email letting you know that you wanted to speak this evening? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. At this time, we have Board Member Response to Public Comment, and again, I'd like to refer to our Board Policy KD, which says that there is an agenda item, Board Member Response to Public Comment, which immediately follows Public Comment. Board of Education members may elect to offer their own comments concerning topics presented by the public. Each Board Member will be given three minutes to speak and may not transfer his or her time to another Board Member. A member who chooses to address a speaker's comments will refrain from initiating a dialogue. Any Board Member may indicate his or her intention to follow up with a speaker at a later time as an individual Board Member, but not as a representative of the entire Board. So at this time, I'll ask if any of my colleagues have comment that they would like to make in response to anything that they've heard this evening.
I don't, I don't want to respond. I just want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking. It was good to hear your opinions, and we thank you very much for being here.
I'd like to say the same thing, but I'd like to have everybody that came from Hancock please stand.
Absolutely.
I normally don't speak because I'm not a Board Member at this time, but I do want to address the Hancock community. As many of you are aware, I was at Hancock for four years as principal. Very proud to have served at Hancock. Maybe you don't, aren't aware that I was principal there for four years. Four wonderful years of my almost forty-year career at this point. I have a lot of fond memories of Hancock. Want the very best for not only the school, but for the students and for the community. I do appreciate the mayor and Councilman Little's comments about the school being the nucleus of the uh community. We recognize that throughout our entire system and all of our smaller communities. You know, school is definitely a focal point. There, how any rumor got started of the school closing, there is no intent on my part or to make that suggestion at this time at all. There's no master plan, there's no conspiracy, there's no uh, no, nothing of interest of the Board's interest of closing the school. Part of the challenge, and I've responded to any number of people on email, when you do that electronically, I imagine my emails have circulated around the community. I've tried to be very clear and very upfront. It is gonna be difficult to continue to offer a wide variety of course offerings and meet the needs of every child at Hancock, and we'll just need to determine how to best do that together as a group. Might be through technology, it might be through other means, maybe it's through some type of strong magnet that would attract students to Hancock, I don't know. But any process of closing the school would be a process. Mr. Trotta, our Chief Legal Counsel, could go through all that, but it, it is a lengthy process to close the school. There'd be public comment, there'd be hearings, there'd be a whole series of things before something that, like that would happen. Again, the challenge is, and we're gonna hear later on tonight, um, you know, our projections for the future. The school's gonna continue to decline based on, Mrs. Flowers, I know you're familiar with fifth grade. I think the last count I heard was like thirty-three students in fifth grade coming to sixth grade. At one time, that was closer to sixty students coming over. So it's a real challenge that we have to look at. From the ag uh position, I respect everyone tonight being respectful of the personnel comments that Mrs. Williams read at the beginning. Our intention is to fill the position, is, position is not being cut. We do have eight potential applicants in our pool, and we'll pursue those applicants and make them aware of the availability of a position, and we'll do our best to um, you know, hire another outstanding ag teacher there. All resources and everything that are at Hancock will remain there. So just for points of clarity, a lot of information got circulated, just wanted to try to make sure that you got the right information, and I think I've been consistent with what I've been sharing, and that's everything that I know. So thank you again for coming. The Board Members, as well as myself and staff, we just definitely want to provide the very best we can for all the children of Hancock. It will become increasingly challenging to do that, and we need to figure that out together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the Superintendent's Report. We'll have the first part of the Superintendent's Report now, and then um we will continue after new business. So Dr. Michael, back to you.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm excited. We have three presentations we want to make to students and to staff tonight. We're gonna start with uh Boonsborough High School Academic Team Winners. I'm gonna ask Beth Moore to come forward here in just a minute to share just a little bit about our competition, about our winners, and introduce them. We're gonna invite the Board to go down front in just a minute. And while we're down there, um, we're gonna recognize our Carson Scholars and Jessica Reinhardt. Dr. Reinhardt's gonna come forward, share a little bit about the Carson Scholarship Program, and then announce our scholar winners that are here this evening, and we'll greet those students down front. And then immediately following that, Joni Burkhardt will come forward. Our five finalists for Teacher of the Year, and another week we'll know our Teacher of the Year, a little bit over a week, we'll know our Teacher of the Year for Washington County for 2018. But we're gonna get a chance to meet our five excellent finalists. I had the opportunity to go and announce that they were finalists several weeks ago. Definitely the highlight of my day, um, to be able to participate in that along with Joni and some other people. So with that, I'm gonna ask Beth Moore if she would come forward. Maybe I ask Beth, maybe just make comments about the academic team winners, but before you announce the students, let the Board have a chance to come down front and greet them. For right now, we'll just listen to Beth for a second, and then we'll walk down there.
That's all right.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Each year, we host a competition between our high schools for the academic teams. These students prepare all year, many of them meet at least once a week to prepare for this, and so it's an opportunity for those students in our advanced placement courses, in our international bachelor laureate courses, in our honors courses, to show their academic prowess. And the facts and knowledge that these students are able to recall quite quickly is very impressive. We are pleased this evening to be able to recognize the winners of that competition. They are from Boonsborough High School, and so I would like them to come forward. We will be representing the trophy that they were awarded at the competition, and we also have a scholarship check for them, thanks to the courtesy of the Nora Roberts Foundation, the Washington County Public Schools Education Foundation, the Washington County Teachers Association, and the Washington County Teachers Federal Credit Union. The winning school receives a $1,000 scholarship for their senior team members and other competition costs.
Lights are dim up here. All the lights turned up.
So first, we would like the coach of the team to come forward, Tracy Sokka. Tenth-grade representatives, Claire Dever. Anisha Kasuri. And Christopher Lee. Eleventh grade, Will Dowb. Gabriel Judeman. Hannah Little. And Andrew Osmond. And Andrew. And the twelfth-grade representative, A.J. Kasuri. This is all the members that were able to attend. We will send the rest of the certificate, certificates home. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Reinhardt. And students that are here tonight, if you would just file right over by Mr. Vick. That would be great. Someone else wanna take a new opportunity?
So, good evening, Madam President, Dr. Michael, and members of the Board. The Carson Scholars Fund receives applications from bright, talented, and dedicated students throughout the nation. Applicants are nominated by their school based on their high academic achievement and commitment to their communities. With this honor, these students will receive a $1,000 college scholarship and recognition package. And we had one WCPS student who was named as this year's 2018 Carson Scholar. He was nominated by his gate teacher, Mrs. Ann Dunn. High School. Nora Keller, grade 7, Western Heights Middle School. Abigail Kittle, grade 10, Smithsburg High School. Grace Kittle, grade 8, Smithsburg Middle School. Adam Metz, grade 10, Boonsborough High School. Anna Mooney, grade 8, Northern Middle School. And
So I would like for our current Teacher of the Year to join you also, Carolyn Holcomb. She has served as a spokesperson, represented Washington County admirably throughout the state, and most importantly, has still provided outstanding instruction to the children at Western Heights Middle School. Washington County thanks you for your service and everything that you've done. It's been truly wonderful. This year, Washington County received over 100 nominations for the Teacher of the Year program. Teachers were nominated by administrators, supervisors, colleagues, content specialists, parents, and even students. From the 60 teachers who completed the application process and a rigorous screening process, five finalists were chosen by a panel of judges which included educators and community members. I'm going to introduce the five finalists right now. And in alphabetical order, in no order, just alphabetical order, is Rachel Daly, Spanish teacher at Williamsport High School. Rachel has taught for seven years in Washington County Public Schools. Rachel's classroom is fueled by high energy and enthusiasm, and all students actively engage in authentic Spanish communication every day. Que fantastico. Please, you can just shake their hands. Our next finalist is Lisa Victorin Scoopiero. She's an English teacher at North Hagerstown High School. Lisa has taught for 24 years in Washington County Public Schools, and Lisa creates a learning atmosphere where students can collaborate, engage in a project-based learning, and continue to excel using relevant digital skills. Thank you, Lisa. Our next finalist is Janine Horst, 5th grade teacher at Cascade Elementary. Janine has taught in Washington County Public Schools for seven years. Janine skillfully integrates science, social studies, literacy, and math throughout each lesson. Her compassion and dedication to children and to families is inspiring. Our next finalist is Sarah Staley, 3rd grade teacher at Clear Spring Elementary. Sarah has taught for five years in Washington County Public Schools. Sarah creates a welcoming environment where children feel free to explore, ask questions, and reflect on their learning every day. Thank you, Sarah. And our last finalist is Angela Stouffer, Smithsburg High School. She's an advanced anatomy and biology teacher. She has taught for 12 years in Washington County Public Schools. Angie initiates conversation and discussion about complex scientific concepts, and students work collaboratively to design experiments and solve problems. Thank you, Angie. Just so you know, the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the Teacher of the Year banquet, and we look forward to announcing the 2018 winner on April 25th. Good luck to all of you. You're fantastic.
our teachers. Again, I can't tell you how much fun I had to get to walk in the room and have the opportunity to announce our finalists. So with that, that concludes my report for right now. I have a number of items later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. We'll move on to old business. Mr. Trotta, first item of old business, is the second reading of Proposed Changes to Policy IKB homework.
Good evening. The Board of Education approved the first reading of the Proposed Changes to Policy IKB at its public business meeting on April 3. A notice was placed on the website so that comments could be gathered from the community. We did not receive any comments. The Policy Committee is requesting the approval of the second reading of Policy IKB. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of Proposed Changes to Policy IKB entitled Homework.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Discussion? Questions? Mrs. Fisher, did you have anything that you wanted to say on behalf of the Policy Committee?
Not really. This is second read for this policy. I think we discussed it a little bit last time on first read. It's pretty straightforward. No, they don't have anything else to say about it.
Okay. Didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I didn't want you not to have the opportunity to speak.
That's right. Thank you.
All those in favor of approving Policy IKB? Okay, unanimous. Student member concurs. And the next agenda item is the second reading of Proposed Changes to Policy BBFE, Ethics and the Administrative Regulations and Exhibits that follow. Mr. Trotta.
Thank you very much. Since the Board of Education's adoption of its ethics policy and its administrative regulations, which we collectively refer to as the Ethics Policy in 2012, there had been a few changes in state law and also in the Code of Maryland Administrative Regulations that made it necessary to review the Board of Education's ethics policy and to make certain modifications. The Board of Education approved the first reading of the Proposed Changes to the Ethics Policy on February 6, and as you are aware, under Maryland law, we must then submit the proposal to the State Ethics Commission to make certain that the modifications that the Board is recommending are consistent with requirements of state law. We submitted the documents to the State Ethics Commission immediately after the first reading. I'm pleased to report that they submitted their approval on February 15, and we informed the board members of the communication from the State Ethics Commission. They had one minor change, which we have incorporated into the documents that have been provided to the board. The Policy Committee is requesting the approval of the Proposed Changes to the Ethics Policy. Assuming the Board takes that action this evening, we will once again submit the final approved document to the State Ethics Commission for its follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of Proposed Changes to Policy BBFE entitled Ethics Administrative Regulation (BBFER), the Washington County Board of Ethics Regulations, Exhibit BBFE 2, Lobbying Registration Form and Lobbying Activity Report, Exhibit BBFE-E3, Financial Disclosure Form A, and the second reading of Proposed Exhibit BBFE-E5, Application to Request an Advisory Opinion.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Questions, discussion?
I will say this was a rather lengthy and kind of tedious task. It's a 52-page document with all the exhibits, and we did spend a good bit of time on it. We did not make a large amount of changes, but we did comply with the new state regulations. And I think the fact that as we submitted it to the state after the first read, I believe they only changed one word in the entire 53 pages that we wrote. So I think the Policy Committee, thanks to those other members who are on the committee, did a pretty good job with this. It was an important one.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Anyone else?
Okay, the motion is to approve the second reading of Proposed Changes to Policy BBFE, Ethics and the Administrative Regulations and Exhibits that go with it. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous with the student member concurring. That ends our old business, and we'll move on to new business. The first item of new business is the first reading of Proposed Changes to Policy IKE, Promotion and Retention of Students.
Thank you. The Policy Committee conducted a review of Policy IKE at its public work sessions on February 28 and March 27. The Policy Committee is recommending the following. First, that the title of the policy be changed to read Promotion, Acceleration, and Retention of Students. Secondly, that the terms acceleration and promotion be defined in the policy. The Policy Committee also placed this policy in the proper format, which is the standard practice of the Board. We welcome any questions. The Policy Committee is recommending the approval of the first reading of these proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of Proposed Changes to Policy IKE entitled Promotion and Retention of Students.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions for Mr. Trotta or Mrs. Fisher? Any discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor of first reading of Proposed Changes to Policy IKE? Right, unanimous, and the student member concurs?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Next agenda item under new business is the Consent Agenda. Mr. Bakhtel?
Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. I guess we'll do the first four items on the Consent Agenda, item 3, item 4, item 6, and item 7. Those items have been approved, sorry, have been reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee, and they are recommending approval, and staff is available for any questions on those items.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move to approve the renewal of the Concrete Replacement and Maintenance Program to Chuck Harrell Home Construction, Inc., at the unit prices listed. The renewal of the Asphalt Overlay Maintenance Program to Huntsberry Brothers Incorporated at the unit prices listed. The purchase of an Avaya software update from Carousel Industries at a cost of $161,579, and 920 digital radios from Mills Communications Incorporated at a total cost of $215,236.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Questions for Mr. Bakhtel on those items from the Consent Agenda?
No.
Can you just explain the Avaya software update? That's the phones, correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to get some more information on exactly what that is.
It's the software for the phone, so it'd be the equivalent of your iPhone operating system or Windows for your computer system. So it's the license. Do you want to add anything?
Yeah, it's licenses, it's an upgrade of the OS. We run our phone system to get us up to the terms of recent for these of the software.
So this is different from the actual phones themselves?
Correct. It's not the equipment, correct. It's simply the software.
Yes, the software that runs our PBX that runs our phone system.
And I understand this will be a pretty decent upgrade?
Yeah, it's a big upgrade, taking us from release 6 to 7. So there's a few iterations in between that we did not partake in.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So the motion is Mr. Bickford's on the Consent Agenda items that have been pulled, 3, 4, 6, and 7. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Student member concurs. Mr. Bickford, you have another motion for us?
I do. Oddly enough, I make a motion to approve the awards renewals and procurements for the security improvements at Northern Middle School to Milton Stamper Builders at a cost of $280,000. The walk-in freezer cooler replacement at Williamsport High School to Milton Stamper Builders at a cost of $70,800. And security improvements at Rockland Woods Elementary School to Milton Stamper Builders at a total cost of $38,200.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions for Mr.? Any questions for Mr. Bakhtel? All right, the vote is on Mr. Bickford's motion. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, student member concurs.
Not unanimous.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six affirmative votes and one abstention. Thank you. My apologies, Mr. Gessford. Okay, so that vote again, six affirmative, one abstention, student member concurring. Thank you. So you get into a rhythm and routine, and you just... Sorry. Okay, we're back to the Superintendent's Report, Part Two.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bakhtel.
Okay, thank you. In just a moment, I'm going to ask staff to run a short video that I received. Over the last two weeks, we had our scholastic books delivered to the school. The Board voted back in January, February timeframe, to use money from the fund balance to purchase, I think it was about $265,000 for the books, to increase our library collection, which is very, very important to our entire reading effort at the elementary level. I received all types of cards and thank yous and various things. But one thing that I received was video of anticipation of the books, and we just wanted to share it tonight. So I'm going to see if tech will roll that. I'd like to just share that with the board. I just thought that was one of many things that were shared with us. So again, we want to thank the Board. We think this is going to advance the reading levels of our children significantly. Fits right into our program. We have a very exciting grant that we're going to apply for here very soon. I'll be sharing more information with the Board about that. But it's a significant grant that I think is going to move us forward substantially. Couple other just announcement-type things. Youth Apprenticeship Open House was here last week on April 12th. Certainly want to thank all of our businesses that have been part of our apprenticeship program. We're always looking for more businesses because we have more students to place. So if you have any interest in that, certainly contact Dr. Pugh or the Board of Education here, the central office, and we'll be glad to connect you with students that are looking for an apprenticeship opportunity. A lot of announcements in the sense of April 16th through the 20th is Week of the Young Child. It's a national celebration of early learning. I know that the Board members proudly received an invitation, at least from Funktown, who's celebrating that. I believe they're calling Working Together Wednesday, that you may have been invited to. If you have the opportunity, it always makes you feel good to go to Funktown or to any of our pre-K programs. So I'd encourage you to help celebrate the Week of the Child by participating in that. This week is also National Volunteer Week. And I can't thank our volunteers and our schools enough, particularly in elementary. But we have volunteers at middle school and high school, particularly with band and sports and other programs, PTAs. But we have a lot of classroom volunteers and just a significant number of people that just dedicate their time every day to help make Washington County Public Schools a better place for their students. And we just want to recognize it's National Volunteer Week. And I just want to personally share my appreciation for the work of our volunteers. Earth Day is April 22nd. We've had a number of groups promote environmental science this week and the first of next week. I know the city, I think, participated with a group of our students. I know Fountaindale was doing something special. So a lot of things are happening this week to celebrate Earth Day. Next week, obviously, we won't have Board meeting next week, but Administrative Assistance Day is on Wednesday, April 25th. ESP people, our educational support personnel, how much I value their work. But particularly our administrative assistants, there's a special day to recognize them. Our office staff and assistants to the school just work tirelessly and are their public face for many of our schools and just do an incredible job. And I just want to offer my thank you and recognize that there'll be a special day for them next Wednesday. I'm sure their schools and administrative teams and things will be recognizing them. Also, National School Lunch Hero Week, April 30th through May 4th. So that's going to come up on the time of our next Board meeting. Food Nutrition Services is celebrating that by launching an updated Facebook page. So we're pretty excited about that. I do want to share with the public, we have two more listening sessions. We had a good listening session at Smithburg High School, I guess, two weeks ago now. I think we had about 35 or 40 participants, a wide variety of topics. I would encourage the public to come out if they want to share what Washington County's doing right, ideas that they might have that we can improve, things that they're concerned about. Certainly, we'll provide that opportunity. On April 26th at Williamsport High School and also on May 3rd at Hancock Middle Senior High School, both of those listening sessions start at 6:30. And one final announcement I do want to make. We are having, and I'm almost embarrassed to say this, but we're having ongoing phone issues with our current provider. Who, not the phone that we just voted on here a few minutes ago. That's like the software inside your phone. This would be the equivalent of your provider. You have your iPhone or your Android phone, and then you select a provider. We just had ongoing issues. I've had three or four letters to the president of the company. Today, we did finally get in direct contact with somebody at the head office, and they've given us some assistance this evening. And they're telling us they're actively working on this. But I appreciate the public's patience in this. It is nothing that we control. We are in the hands of an outside company to keep our phone service up. And I almost wish back for the days of a tin can and a long string, I guess. It's become so complicated with software and the networks and all these types of things. Even a transition from this company to another company is not something we can do overnight. I'm being told it will take several months to make that transition. So I hope that they can correct it immediately. I apologize for any inconvenience we've had to the public. Continue to reach out, stop at the school, send us an email. We do receive emails. Hopefully, we'll have the phones up and working consistently here very soon. But if you can't reach us, if you're getting a busy signal, that is part of this ongoing problem. Don't hesitate to send us an email. You can send me an email, and I'll contact the school somehow, and we'll be sure to get ahold of you. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Our next agenda item is Personnel Action. Dr. Bishop?
Good evening, Dr. Michael, Mrs. Williams, Mr. Staffer, Board members, and our student member. As discussed earlier in closed session this evening, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you. Mr. Staffer, is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. So the motion is to approve Personnel Actions discussed in closed session today. All those in favor? No? Okay, so that's six opposed, one. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. That brings us to reports to the Board. First report to the Board is Ms. Deanna Newman with Public Pathways, Inc. and Mr. Chriswell, our Senior Project Manager and Planning Supervisor. You're going to be talking to us about enrollment forecast for 2018 through 2027.
Yes, ma'am.
Which seems way in the distant future, but...
Yes, ma'am, it is.
It's a ways out there.
So I'm with Ms. Deanna Newman of Public Pathways Incorporated tonight to present the 10-year enrollment projections. In your packet, you receive the two-page document that gives the school-by-school projections for each facility. But Ms. Newman and I are going to kind of go through the global view of the school system here to give you kind of a view of where we anticipate we're going. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Deanna, and I may chime in here or there.
Okay, there you go. Got a presentation. You know, I always look at enrollment projections at like archery. The bigger the target and the closer it is, the more accurate we're going to be. And so when we get out to 2027, the accuracy is probably not as good as it is in 2018. But the... So I'll get started here. Good evening, Superintendent, Board members. I think you've probably already seen what's on the screen right now, which is the September 30th official 2017 enrollment. Chad may have reviewed this with you. And what you'll see here is that overall, although we grew in the county, for a couple of the areas, for example, K-5, we actually declined. And we'll talk a little bit about what's going on there in terms of enrollment. And pretty flat in six through eight. Probably the star of this past year is the pre-K numbers and the increase in the number of both students and in the number of programs that went from part-time to full-time. So this number is a little bit deceiving, but in general, we'll talk a little bit about how that shows up in your projections even next year. The nice thing is that this is, this year's enrollment is the largest enrollment in Washington County in at least the past 10 years. And in fact, probably the 10 years prior to that as well. It is way up over the 22, 500 students. And the trend probably for the next 10 years is going to be very similar. It's going to be a gradual increase over the next 10 years as well. And there's reasons for that. So just to review, I actually use a standard cohort model. It's a trend analysis. It's one that's nationally recognized in terms of its ability to do projections. I actually also include into that the birth information that I receive from the state of Maryland on the births. And I take those births, and I look at how many children appear in kindergarten five years later, which is also basically a cohort trend analysis. I receive information from Chad on GIS, where he talks, he gives me information on the fifth graders who are going to be going into sixth grade and where they geographically live. He also provides me information on boundary changes, on any kind of program changes. For example, the changes that are being made with regards to pre-K, many of which actually have a one-time impact on the enrollment. And it, but it helps me as I work through at least next year's projection. We look at housing starts. I don't actually take the housing information and just put it right on top of the projection. I'm really looking again at trends in terms of housing. And then we also take that eventually, and we cross-check that with the state of Maryland projections, which come out a little bit later, actually, than when I do the local projection. And we need to be within about 5% of that, and we tend to be that way pretty much every year without knowing that. So the typical cohort table, what I'm looking for is the number of children who become, who were first graders last year, who become second graders, and so on and so forth. It is a little chaotic if you look at it on a year-to-year basis. Sometimes it's plus 37, and sometimes it's minus 17. Again, go back to the archery analysis. It works itself out eventually over large periods of time. So the, when I look at the enrollment history, I see two different kinds of changes in our enrollment. One of them is what I call rollover. It's the number of fifth graders who leave versus the number of kindergarteners come in. This tends to be cyclical. We've talked actually over the last couple of years about how this cycle is impacting our elementary schools right now because we have more, we have smaller kindergartens coming in to our schools. In this past year, we had a fairly large fifth grade go out. But we did not have as large a kindergarten coming in as we had hoped for. The second piece that I look at is what I call in-migration. It's the number of children who were not in the system last year who are in the system this year. They are, I consider them in-migration into the county. People who come from new housing is a typical way in which we would see that. So this past year, the reason we declined in the K through five is because our rollover outgoing fifth grade was so much larger than our kindergarten. Quick look at the births. Again, I said I use a standard cohort model. I look at five years ago, I look at how many come into kindergarten. That number, if we do not have any in-migration into the county, that number is never one-to-one. You have 2,000 students in private school. You have students who are in homeschool. Typically, nationwide, that's about 3.5%. But here in Washington County, it's about 5% in homeschool?
It's a little lower than that.
A little lower than that. Yeah, nationwide, it's about 3.5%. So that number is never going to be one-to-one unless we have in-migration from new housing in the county. So during our lowest point, it was about .89. Last year, we had a pretty good increase in that. We projected again, we were wrong. The enrollment, the transition from five years ago to our kindergarten this year was much less than we'd actually anticipated it would be. I am still optimistic. I am still very optimistic that the number of, the amount of housing and growth that you're seeing right now will eventually cause that number to increase. And so I've made a projection here that the kindergartens will actually start increasing over the next couple of years. Middle school, we don't see a whole lot of in-migration in the middle school. Typically, student people are more mobile in their elementary years. And as you can see by looking at this chart, very seldom do we see a whole lot of in-migration. Most of the time, what we're looking at is the outgoing eighth grade and the incoming sixth grade. And since we only have three grades, it can actually cause pretty, be pretty impactful at the middle school level. At the high school level, we're looking at the ninth grade coming in. This past year, we knew we were going to grow at the high school level. And we grew almost exactly on target for our projection for them. One of the things I would want to note about this table is that last year was the first year that we had full, I think I'm right, full implementation of the compensatory age 18 in the high school. You would expect that we would see, have seen changes to the pattern here in our high schools, but we haven't. In general, the pattern of ninth to 10th, 10th to 11th, 11th to 12th has been pretty consistent in terms of students who are opting for other ways to graduate. Either they're graduating early, or they're choosing some other way to make it through. And so the pattern, it's not as though suddenly all of our students who enter the ninth grade are staying because of other choices that they've made. So the pattern is pretty much the same as it was five years ago before the compensatory requirement was in place. So as I said earlier, I don't actually take the housing and just put it on top. I don't look at an area and say, okay, where we have 20 new houses coming in, and that's times .4 children in the elementary school, and then I add them on. And one of the reasons is, is you look at this table right here, needs a little bit of interpretation. What you see in the, is it brown for you? Yeah, it's brownish-dark color on the bottom, and then the green on the top. Those are the housing certificates of occupancy in those years. And the brown is single-family, the green on the top is multifamily. But what you see in the yellow next to it is the amount of growth that we got in our enrollment in in-migration. So in some years, for example, in 2013, we had 350 single, 350 certificates of occupancy and almost no growth from in-migration. It does matter to track housing. It matters to track it long-term and more broadly. But we can't always just assume that 30 houses are going to generate eight children next year. So it's a little chaotic.
So I'm going to chime in. The map that you see here is going to be in the Educational Facility Master Plan that we're going to bring forward to the Board here in about a month. We're going to go through all of the developments in that document that are shown on this map. But this map's here to show, last year, when we looked at this map, there was a little bit more orange in it than what there is today. And the orange represents the inactive or conceptual developments. We're starting to see some of them not quite getting to the point where they're digging dirt, but they're starting to get final plat approval. And it's something we want to keep an eye on. but they're starting to get final plat approval, and it's something we want to keep an eye on. So there's a little bit more blue. And this is just the major subdivisions in the county where it's eight dwellings or more as defined by the adequate public facility ordinance. So again, we're going to have some more information. We'll show you the actual developments and the numbers when we go through the educational facility master plan. But it is a good graphic to look at just to see that, okay, we're not quite recovered, but we're maybe, maybe heading there. In preparation of the projections, obviously, Ms. Newman has to make some assumptions. We have to make some assumptions. As we move forward, we assume we're going to still see about 275 homes or usual occupancies a year for the next couple of years, and then it'll start to increase as we move out. We are expecting to see this year's smaller kindergarten, kindergarten class size, next year's anticipated smaller kindergarten class size, maybe bring the elementary enrollment down a little bit. But we'll see that start to pick back up based on, as you said, her anticipated projections, of being optimistic. But we'll continue to watch that along with the actual birth rates. And then the high schools, we anticipate the, the numbers to kind of trend the way they have been. As we go through the 10-year enrollment projections, the first thing I want to talk about is pre-K. And this is, this is really a true testament when you look at this graph. It's, it's, it's impressive. Two years ago, in 2016, we had 411 full-time equivalent pre-K students. And that was 472 half-day program students and 172 full-day program students. As of March of this year, we surpassed the number of students that we had with the program changes that were implemented that we saw in September. We are now up to 704 full-time equivalent pre-K students, really a, a growth of that program. And, and only 88 of those students are half-day students. That is really impressive from where we were. And looking towards next year, we are projecting to be at a total of 860 full-time equivalent students with only 30 of those students being in a half-day program. So that's, that's, that's very impressive.
Okay, so hold that thought about the growth in the pre-K. And these are the projections for 2017 through 2023. They show gradual growth in, from, throughout that period. Overall, growth through 2023 of about 680 students, about one elementary school's worth of students. Clearly, it's not all in the same, it's, it's spread out throughout the county. Some areas will not grow at all, some areas will grow a lot more than that. If we, but if we actually look only at the K through five students, what you'll see is that the projection for 2018 actually is decline again. And again, that has something to do with a fairly large, actually, eighth, fifth grade moving out. And again, another small elementary school coming, uh, kindergarten coming in, okay? So we're going to show growth, but most of that growth is really going to be coming from the growth in the pre-K population. I think that's the end of it. That's my proj, that's my hope. And in terms of, of looking at where we are with our, our, our incoming kindergartens, we finally have some balance with our outgoing fifth grade. They're a little bit closer together. I think that probably with, because of housing, we'll start, we'll begin to see some small amount of growth in our elementary schools. And I'm not even hoping for millennials to get each other to get married and start having children. If they, eventually, as they begin to do that, I think we're also going to see an impact in our kindergarten. If we look at it that way, it's growth in the K-5 population of about 400 students over this period of time. At the middle school level, we actually have the, but next year, as, as that large fifth grade becomes a large sixth grade, we probably are going to see a fairly, fairly sizable increase in our middle school population next year. But again, they're going to start seeing a little bit of the, the, the smaller grades coming through that are coming out of the elementary schools. It's cyclical. It's basically a wave or a trough is, is the way I, I usually think about it. For the high school, again, the high school probably will break even next year, but over the course of the next five years, we should be able to see quite a bit of growth in our high schools. I don't normally project your special populations. They are, I, I assume that, that they are what they were last year unless I'm told otherwise for programmatic reasons that they will be different. So overall, we're looking at growth in the pre-K through 12 population of about 1,000 students over this period of time. If we actually take a step out all the way to 27, 2027, and we are required for the state to go out 10 years, and we're looking at closer to about 1,800 pre-K through 12. Again, if we only look at the K-12, that, those numbers are a little bit smaller. It's growth of about 800 over the, over the six-year period and growth of about 1,500 over the 10-year period. So we are required to take this, these projections, and we are required to compare them to the state's projections. And, and I, I, I thought I would show you this graph here. I, I think one of the fun things about the graph is that it really does illustrate this idea of cycles and how cycles tend to cause waves in our, inside of our, our system. It, the baby boomer wave came through, and it followed by a baby boomlet wave that came through. And I, and again, I always talk about this as, as being kind of a trough that we're in right now as a result of recession, this particular generation having their children later, all of those kinds of things. But the state of Maryland, what you're looking at here is the state of Maryland's projection for pretty much the entire state. We can look at it this way because the state of Maryland actually does, they start off this way, and then they disaggregate their numbers to, to the county level. It's one of the reasons why they all, if we try to appeal to them, they find it very difficult to respond that year because to give us more numbers, they'd have to take it away from someone else because they have disaggregated them. But they, but you can see very clearly the wave in which they have, that they're showing their elementaries, where they're showing a trough of elementary decline over the next few years. About 2021, 22, they're showing a break even. They're showing a, a increase over the next three years. The interesting thing is that by 2026, the state is actually showing a downward cycle. The projections I have presented to you today do not show a downward cycle in the elementary schools. It shows a continued increase in the elementary schools all the way out to 2027. This is the one place where the state and I are in disagreement with each other, but not more than 5%. When you look at the middle school, you see exactly the same wave. The wave is just a little bit, just a few years later. And when you see the high schools, you see the same wave. It actually goes off the chart here, but it's the same wave going through. And then, and that, so, so that, those are the projections that they are sending us. They, I, I, we, we have agreed with their trend, but maybe not their number.
Well, thank you. For any questions?
No questions? Apparently not.
Everything I'm going to say is I hope Ms. Newman didn't bring you bad luck. Their school system was closed for snow the past couple of days, so.
We had 15 inches of snow over the weekend. Even unusual for us.
Oh, goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next report to the board is a report on the status of the urban educational campus. The Board of Education component. Mr. Prue, good evening.
Good evening. President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Code of Maryland Regulation Article 23 dot 03 dot 03 dot 11 pertains to unsolicited proposals. This is the specific regulation that provides oversight and guidance to the Urban Educational Campus BOE Component Project. One of the provisions of the regulation identifies a requirement to make a notice to the public in advance of Board of Education approval, which is the impetus for this presentation tonight. In 2015, an unsolicited proposal was received from the Bowman Development Corporation for the construction of an academic building next to the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. Following COMAR and state public school construction laws for alternative construction delivery methods, a request for proposals was advertised to allow other interested parties to submit competing proposals. From the RFP 25, excuse me, RFP 2015 dash 34, the board resolved in September of 2015 to have Bowman Development Corporation develop a five-story classroom building at the location next to the Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. In 2016, the Board of Education's project became part of a larger downtown Hagerstown revitalization project, including county government, the University of Maryland, the City of Hagerstown, and the Maryland Theater. The board agreed to certain terms of the downtown project through a memorandum of understanding, which was signed by President Williams in early 2017. The Bowman Development Corporation has been busy working through the design process of the school addition, and this body approved the construction documents for bidding at their meeting on March 16, 2018. Tomorrow, general contractor bids will be received by Bowman. The bids will be the basis for Bowman to develop a guaranteed maximum price for the project, which will also include the cost of the land. Barring any delays in the vetting of general contractors and their bid submissions, it is staff's intention to bring this price to the board for approval at the May 1st business meeting. And if all goes well, we expect construction activities to begin in June and for the project to be, excuse me, for the project to be complete in early 2020. And with that, I can take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Questions?
Mr. Prue, I think tonight this is part of the COMAR requirement that we make this announcement prior to the official contract award, which, as Mr. Prue's indicated, will happen on May 1st, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Board member committee reports. Mr. Diallo, would you like to begin?
So last week, on Wednesday, the, our county student government went down to the state's student government conference down in Ocean City, Maryland. We went there as a delegation of WCASC, which is the Washington County Association of Student Councils, and we attended the MASC State Conference. It was a great experience, and I thank WCPS and Dr. Michael for allowing us to go year after year. It was, it was eye-opening, and it's just empowering being able to sit in a room of student leaders from all across the state and being able to advocate and resonate with their problems because we all are one, one Maryland, regardless of, you know, our area, our districts. I mean, we are the same state. So I mean, it was a great experience. I commend North Hagerstown for being host staff. We sent about 20 kids down there as host staff, and we had Ms. O'Kane and her hospitality and tourism team set up for the advisors there, and it was honestly a great experience. So thank you, and I guess that's all for, that's all for us right now.
Thank you, Mr. Diallo. Would you like to be next, Ms. Murray?
The meeting of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, April 24th at 10:30 a.m. in the board conference room, and topics include prevy learn and health updates.
Yeah, the finance committee meets on April, Tuesday, April 24th at 11 a.m. The only question I had was, there's a, is that conflicting anybody on the curriculum committee? Who's on, who's on curriculum?
Jackie Wayne and Mrs. Murray.
Finance, finance will meet as scheduled at 11.
Thank you. Mr. Gessler?
Thank you. We had a presentation for our committee today with a few different staff members. Talked about the Hagerstown urban revitalization project. Talked about the Sharpsburg Elementary Replacement Project and the security best deals. One of the, one things that we're working on right now is the, what are testing. Mark Mills gave his presentation. We're about 15 schools into that right now, and that means we're kind of ahead of the schedule. So we do have some more schools to go, but we are doing well on that. We also, were brought forth today a concept, a plan that we'll be presenting to the, the board at our May date, our May, our first meeting in May, I think it's May 1st. And it is just now a concept. There's nothing in the master plan, but we'll hear more about that project in the future, so. Also want to say there will be no facilities meeting in May. So our next one will be in June.
Thank you, Mr. Gessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher, policy?
Policy committee has not met since our last business meeting, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April the 24th at 9:15.
Mr. Riedner?
HR, excuse me, HR will meet again at the end of May, probably May 29th.
Thank you, Mr. Riedner. Anyone else have anything? Okay, next on our agenda is future agenda items. You have a future agenda item list in your packet, or you were sent one. We have coming up on May 1st, request of the city of Hagerstown, and also quarterly healthcare updates, a healthcare memorandum of understanding. And Mrs. Kate will be back for the end of legislative session, legislative briefing. Again, that's May 1st, and we have some future dates on there that go out a little further. If you have any other agenda items that you would like to see on a future agenda, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know so that we can put those ideas forward. That's all I have for agenda items, and that brings us then to board member comments. Mr. Riedner, would you like to begin?
I'm not going to start.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Gessler?
I guess, just wanted to like to say thank you to all the teachers who applied for the Teacher of the Year. Although only five were presented tonight, we do have a lot of outstanding teachers in Washington County. And I'd like to thank all those that didn't make it this time, and we hope to see you another year. So congratulations to the five that are finalists.
Thank you.
I spent Thursday, April the 12th at Eastern Elementary School. It was a very professional day, and I just want my fellow board members to know that I will be deciphering my notes and my scribbling to send an email as to the things I learned from the teachers and administration out there, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Mr. Bigford?
I was honored to take part in the Trilogy Fine Arts Competition once again this year. Thank you for, to Dr. Michael for attending. And congratulations to the Best in Show winner, Skylar Judd from Smithburg High School. The Trilogy Arts Competition is sponsored by Capital Women's Care, WCPS, and Hager Hall. And it's a, a nice opportunity to let art students from around the county actually get to showcase their work. Their work is chosen, and it decorates not only parts of our building here, but also Capital Women's Care and Hager Hall, so. And one of the neat things about it is that the, they gave out several awards, including scholarships. And they were spread throughout to Boonsboro High School, Barbara Ingram School for the Arts, Clear Spring High, High School, and Smithburg, so well represented all around the county.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Mrs. Murray?
I too would like to congratulate all of the Teacher of the Year nominees. I'm really looking forward to the dinner and seeing the person who wins. I'm excited for all of them, but I know one of them, Sarah Staley. Since she was a very little girl, I've worked with her mom at Salem, and Sarah went to Salem Avenue. So I'm excited for her, but I'm excited for all of them, and it's going to be a great evening.
Nothing from you today?
Yeah. That's nice. That's this evening. So with that, we'll adjourn. Thank you.